Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 24 version of the Planning Commission meeting. Tonight, we're hosting a study session focusing on the rollout of the ULUC. And Jennifer, should I turn it over to you to introduce Brett?
Sure, sure. So this first part of the meeting, Brett Keyes from Keddie's Collaborative and I are going to be tag teaming a little bit. Brett did a fantastic job a few weeks ago giving council kind of an update of where we are with the ULUC. So he and I are going to tackle that. And then he'll go into a little bit more details about our upcoming ULUC and how you all will be able to comment on that. So hang on a second. Let's see if I can share this. All right. Do you guys see the Unified Land Use Code slide? Okay, all right, I'm gonna do a slideshow. All right. So as I started to say, we're gonna do the briefing on the ULUC and revisit our project goals. So we all know why we're going through all of this. We're also gonna talk about the approach a little bit that we're gonna be taking on the ULUC. It's a lot of stuff that Mike and I have been discussing with you all over the last few weeks and our last few study sessions that we've had. Brett will then walk through the end code and comments. And then we're also going to have Carl Onsager and Elizabeth K. Marquetti, two of our planners from our planning team, come and talk to you about the outreach efforts that we have been doing along the way this past year, as well as what we're looking at doing this coming summer. So that is our agenda for this evening. So first, the ULUC, which has been kind of all eyes on this. It will continue to be all eyes on this for Planning Commission through October. It has taken multiple years and milestones for us to get to this point. If you'll remember, we started out with an eight-month process of working with our community and finding out what the vision needed to be and got a community vision. And then we took that and went right into developing a comprehensive plan, as well as a transportation master plan. And the number one goal that came out for council was to update our land use code. So we have chosen to go with what we call a Unified Land Use Code, and that's where we are right now. So our comprehensive plan still remains our North Star. This is everything in the comprehensive plan, not everything, but as much as we can, we're creating regulations to implement the goals, actions, and policies of the comprehensive plan. It has definitely been a process of discovery. As we've gone through writing the comprehensive plan, that was a huge part of discovery. And we had tons of interaction with our community during that process. We have been in the Unified Land Use Code process for over a year now. We started way back in February in the before times, as I like to call them now, before COVID. When we were actually in person, Brett was here in February of 2020 and kicked us off. We continue to build on that robust community process that we established through the comprehensive plan. So you'll see more of that and what we've been doing with that when Carl and Elizabeth come and talk with us a little bit later. The ultimate goal of the ULUC is to maintain the quality of life and again, put into action the actions, goals, policies of the comprehensive plan. What you'll find when you see the Unified Land Use Code is we really took our future land use and character map, if you remember that from the comprehensive plan, and we've brought it to life. So a lot of, we've done basically kind of a translation, if you will, of the future land use designations, along with the character designations, and translated them into new zone districts for the Unified Land Use Code. So you'll see that as we go along. So Brett, can I kick it over to you?
You bet. Yeah, since the very beginning, we've always kind of stated the philosophy of this project to try to keep it simple. That's very difficult to do with a development code. It's a technical document to begin with. And they kind of grow and morph as you go through this process. Lot of back and forth, lot of wording changes. But we've tried to organize it in a way that will make sense. The ENCODE Plus product that will allow us to display it digitally and to hyperlink everything will really help in conveying this and making it more user-friendly. But just trying to draft in plain terms as much as we can. There's a fine line there between drafting it so that Reed will give it approval, making it legally, legally sound, but at the same time trying to keep it, you know, as simple as you can. You'll see a ton of graphics, a lot of tables, trying to boil things down as opposed to using long paragraphs of text and trying to create options and alternatives through flexibility. So that's kind of a string that ties all this together as well. We've spent quite a lot of time working with other consultants of the city looking at what's market realistic, particularly when we get into, you know, downtown and thinking about how parking applies and building heights and all those types of things of what could we expect? What's feasible for a developer? Want to make sure that we write a code and adopt a code that can actually be built. So that's been a very good process to go through. And then just try to spell out, you know, different ways that people can achieve the end goal, which we want to improve upon, not only maintain, but improve upon quality of life and try to give them ways that they can get there. Next slide, okay. We've looked a lot at procedures. There's a lot of text in this code that is there to help articulate what the city's expectations are. So somebody that's coming from the outside that wants to develop or redevelop in the community can read the code and have a high degree of confidence that they know what the expectations are, what they need to submit, and what they're gonna need for approval. Therefore, there are several things that staff is able to sign off on rather than routing, you know, every single little piece of paper that comes through y'all and through the council. So if we could write good standards and clearly and objectively outline what's required, we've tried to streamline process by doing that. Streamline meaning, you know, less steps, less time, less cost, but without compromising, you know, any of the, you know, necessary input. Character has been the theme throughout this. As Jennifer said, we've taken the character districts from the Land Use and Character Plan and migrated them to zoning districts. The zoning districts are designed to implement the different characteristics of each of those colors on the land use map. So you will see that when we establish the districts. And then focusing on quality, again, there's a line there between, you know, bringing about quality. You'll see increased quality just because this code addresses things that were left blank or silent in your current zoning regulations. So we've specified, you know, landscaping requirements and building requirements and material types and ways to design buildings and design sites and things like that. So from that perspective, it's quite a lot different than what you're used to using for the zoning ordinance because it takes you further down the path of getting that quality for you. And, you know, one size doesn't fit all. So there's different regulations for different districts. And even within the district, sometimes there are different regulations to address the uniqueness of some of your neighborhoods and some of your districts. This just kind of shows you how we've looked at some of the policies that are spelled out in the plan and then how they work their way into the code. I'll just pick one of these. The third one down says to incorporate a housing palette that promotes more diverse housing forms. Well, you have them kind of generically in your zoning ordinance, but they weren't really clearly spelled out. And then we've built upon those. So whereas before you had, in your current zoning ordinance, single-family attached, but it didn't say what that was. So we have provided for a multiplex, which would be three and four units in a single building, kind of like a large house that's split out into three or four units. And then we also have townhomes and row houses where they're up and down units that are side by side. You've got some good examples of those around town. We spelled out live-work units where you can work downstairs and live upstairs. And then we've got, you know, vertically mixed-use buildings like in downtown where you can live upstairs and have retail or office on the first, second floors. So in the new code, there's a lot more housing types. We've also talked about things like accessory dwelling units, still working through the details of that, as well as like clustered housing where they can all be clustered on one lot as kind of an infill, where you can have small, single-family units and you can share garages and things of that nature. So there's more detail in there. So we take that general term from the Conference You Plan and we address it with putting meat on the bone, putting specifics into the code. So this was just an example of what y'all were involved in in creating the land use and and character map, that's the northern part of the city. What we're trying to do is to make the zoning districts align with those different colors to the extent practical. And I think we'll be, you know, real close. That's the intent of this map is to provide that guidance for zoning. As I was mentioning, you know, your regulations are nothing different than every other zoning code in the state and in the country that are dated. You know, it was vague. There was more districts than there needed to be. There was a lot of standards in there that really couldn't be achieved. And so we've modeled all those and made sure that everything can be built. You know, there's a lot of negotiation that had to go on between staff and them because it just didn't articulate well what the expectations were. So that puts burden on staff and hopefully puts burden on you of trying to make decisions when you don't have good decision criteria or good standards to judge an application against. So just trying to be a lot more clear, a lot more articulate. Like I said, there's more words in this code than there is your previous zoning ordinance, just for that reason. And then trying to remove conflict. So one of the values of doing a unified land use code is pulling all development-related ordinances under one cover. And in so doing, making sure that we're eliminating any conflicts or inconsistencies between the different document, design guidelines, standards, you know, kind of across the board. So many of you are familiar with this. Some of you have participated in the different Envision Studios that we had. We organized this process in a unique way around kind of different geographic areas that align with the land use plan. As you know, we started with downtown with kind of a phase two and did those regulations and adopted them. We have since pulled them across into the Unified Land Use Code and integrated them into the whole of the code. And then each of the other four areas, corridors mixed use, were two of the, were basically, we did two Envision Studios for those, two for the neighborhood. And then we did one for business and commercial. So we've done seven Envision Studios, which unfortunately, or fortunately, I guess, were ended up being virtual, but I feel like staff did a phenomenal job to invite people to drive traffic and to get good input. And that was just one part of the equation that you're gonna hear more about in terms of all the things that were done to get input. And this truly has been an evolution of, you know, hearing from people, testing things, getting other inputs and just kind of working iterative to, you know, the draft that we'll be putting out in a couple of weeks.
You wanna cover this one too, Brett?
Sure. You know, that plan, as Jennifer said, is the North Star. So we're doing everything to implement what the community told us is important to you, Commission, Council, Park Preservation Board, and everybody else. So we want to make sure that we have a very close tie between the land use plan and the zoning map, as well as carrying all the policies through, as I've talked about. We know context is important. You know, one building that might fit well in one part of, in one district, might not fill, might not fit well in the same district, but in a different context. So we're very considerate of, you know, building heights that we transition these things, that we provide for buffering and other ways that we can kind of help things, anything that develops, redevelops to do so in a way that's within context of what surrounds it. Lots of loopholes we've been closing. We've basically spelled out a lot of ways that you can provide for affordable housing. Those will all be in the code and then it'll be up to y'all and up to the council as to how those are ultimately implemented as, you know, proposals come forward. The big thing that came out of the plan was an additional 15,000 people or 6,550 dwelling units. And I know many people think, well, we're built out, how's that gonna happen? Well, through redevelopment, through some of the sites that were honestly underutilized or underbuilt along, you know, Santa Fe and other areas that could stand for a little more intensity without being out of character with what Littleton is. But the biggest opportunity or change is that all those commercial areas, commercially zoned properties, you know, up and down Santa Fe and some on Broadway and some on Bellevue. Instead of just being commercial only, they're now corridor mixed use or the CM district, which allows for residential. So therefore, you could have, it can't be residential by itself, so you're not gonna see apartment complexes. It's gonna be commercial with a complement of residential, which can be in a variety of formats. So if we maintain the same densities that you have in town today and spread it across those properties, you will be able to easily meet those additional dwelling units. So that's something that Commission and Council and staff can be looking at as applications come in to make sure that there is a good complement of residential so that you can support commercial with rooftops. They can sustain yourself economically. Accessory dwelling units, again, we spelled out different types of accessory dwelling units. And we've been having lots of conversations about those and trying to figure out where might they best apply. They're not gonna be, you know, broadly cast across all districts across the city. That's just not what Littleton is. But, you know, if there are areas that they can be accommodated without disrupting the, you know, the peace and tranquility and character of neighborhoods, then, you know, that's what we'll be proposing in the draft. And then we'll see where it goes through public comment and where it lands in October. And then we've looked at, you know, ways that we can address Littleton Boulevard and its uniqueness, how we can address the uniqueness of different neighborhoods and then the corridor mixed area. So you'll see all those coming forward in the draft in the form of district.
So having said that of kind of what we've heard, we're obviously trying to merge that all into the ULUC. And as you all have been told and are anxiously awaiting, the day is near where everyone will get to see, I'm sorry, my screen keeps going blank. Going back on, okay. So we want to hear from you all. And there are a couple of different ways that we're gonna be able to do that come June 7. So that is still the date that we will drop it. It might be the end of June, the end of the day on June 7, but it will go live on June 7. So Brett is here. We have probably about seven or eight slides to explain what you're gonna be looking at when you see our all online new code. So go ahead.
So I'll focus your attention on this image on the right-hand side of the screen. This is not your code, it's just illustrative, but it will look, your code will look much like this. So I'll show you how to get to it here in a moment. But you'll see the table of contents down the left-hand side, just like it's shown here. There will be a series of folders and then subfolders. And you can click on the little plus symbols and you can open up those folders. And then beneath that, where she's pointing right now, purpose of applicability alternative. If you click on any one of those at that level in the hierarchy, there will be a little bar along the side that when you click, it says comments. When you click it, this little comment box will pop out that's surrounded in green. And it will ask for name and email address and then your comments. And when you enter that comment, it will automatically link to this section. In this case, it's 21.18.07 Parking Lot Landscaping Standards. But what we'll want you to do is to be very explicit. In other words, say, paragraph three, sentence two, change this from this to that. Or consider striking this sentence so that when we get it and we have no context of, you know, your comment that we can read it on its face and know, okay, they want me to delete this or add this word. What we're not wanting is for people to wax poetic and write paragraphs and paragraphs for which take us a lot of time and we're not able to decipher what changes need to be made out of that. So that can be done with conversation, but in this format, just try to keep it as as very straight and narrow and to the point and as specific as you possibly can. So we can go in there and say, yep, I know exactly what they want to do, that makes sense, and make that change. Go to the next slide if you would please, Jennifer.
Looks like that was a two-parter, hang on. Okay.
Okay, so you're gonna be going to envisionlittleton.org. There's the bar across the top. And when you click on the ULUC, it's gonna take you to a page that's gonna show you these instructions. You guys will probably be able to skip through that because you've already seen this. But the public who don't have the benefit of site's meeting will need to go through those. So you'll click that, go to the next slide. Okay, so this is what it'll look like when you click ULUC. It'll give you a public review draft and you will click on that. And it'll go through the instructions, as I said, but that will basically get you into the draft for which you can provide comments. So this is what it will look like. You will see on the main part of the page, Title 10, zoning regulations, Chapter 7, Site Development Plan. That's all the proposed text that's there on the right-hand side. You see on the left-hand side that we have highlighted that chapter and all of the sections beneath it. So you see 10-7-1 applicability and you see that on the right-hand side. So you will want to comment on the section level, what we highlighted here in blue. If you highlight, if you provide a comment on Chapter 7, we're not gonna know where within that chapter your comment is. So you want to drill down to where you get to the section level beneath the chapter, okay? And again, we're gonna have this all spelled out as reminders when you actually go into the code. Next slide? Yep. So you'll see this green comment box along the side. So you go down the table of contents, you click on that section that you're ready to, like 10-7-1 applicability. And then you click on the comment box and next slide, it will pop out. And yeah, go to the next slide, that's not real clear, actually. Yep, it'll give you this. So you can type in your name and email address and put in your, put in your comment. You're gonna actually see this right next to the text. So you'll be able to go through and say, paragraph three, sentence two, change it from 10 to 15 feet or change it from this word to that word or strike that sentence, okay? And then when you're done, make sure you click submit. That will submit your comment. If you have another comment in that section, it's probably best to click on the comment bar and add another comment rather than continuing a long list so that we can separate what your comments are associated with, what part of the text. So this is an example. Mia, her name or email address, she says C7, but she's narrowing down. Did there be another provision for other items as the community record sees fit? You know, so she's suggesting possible texts that could be added in there. And then once that's entered in, you can just click submit. What this is gonna do is it's going to create a running list of all the comments from all persons. That includes you, that includes the Story Preservation Board, that includes the council. And I don't know whether staff's opening up any other boards or commissions. And then it will also be to the public. When you put in your email address, please use your city-provided email address. Okay, not a personal or Gmail or something like that. That's gonna help us distinguish your comments from, you know, those from somebody in the public. Okay? And then, once we get all these comments, it will create a table in every section where there's comments. It will not show your name and the date, okay? So you don't have to worry about that. But it will show the comments. If we have 10 comments in this section, you'll be able to see all those comments. And if somebody's already made the comment that you're gonna make, then you know you don't need to. But you can kind of get the context of what people are saying, where they're going as a commission. That'll be important just for you guys to kind of understand what the public is saying about this section and what needs to change. Okay, and that'll happen for all the sections. Any section you go into, you'll see section comments. If there's been any comments entered in that section, they'll be in a table that's embedded right in that section. Another slide, Jen?
I, did I not grab one?
No, is there another one after this or no?
No. Nope.
Okay, so.
That was it.
Basically, you'll be able to click right into the code. You'll be able to go to individual sections. And then you'll be able to click on that comment box, enter your comment, and then keep moving progressively through the document that way. I would imagine there'll be some sections that you have more interest in than others. Some of you may click on every single section and go through all of it. There's a lot to go through. And then, as I said, this will create a list of all the comments from everybody. Staff will be going through those and deciphering. And then we will be having conversations about. Staff will be going through those and deciphering, and then we will be having conversations about necessary changes. Any changes that are to be made will be done with track changes. So when we're done with this, we will be able to publish a new draft with track changes that will show. All the changes that were made to respond to all of the comments and questions. And then. If all those comments are accepted. Or changes are accepted, then we'll republish a, a clean draft. So that's how the commenting process is going to work. It works quite efficiently. To keep them all in one place to document them. In all of the individual sections. So this will be published on June 7th by 11:59 PM. And will be available on the eighth and I believe we have through July 30th for public comment, correct? Jen?
That is correct.
Uh, so there's nearly two months of public comment, which scares me a little bit. In terms of the number of comments we'll get. But fortunately staff will be. Sorting through those and helping to identify changes necessary. And then after that, we'll be, you know, addressing those changes and publish them back, publishing them back out. And then having meetings, uh, with mission and council and others for the October consideration for adoption. Any questions from what I presented? Does it seem pretty straightforward?
Daunting is okay. I promise it gets easier.
What is okay?
If it seems daunting right now.
Oh, yes.
It's okay. It, it gets easier. Trust, trust me. Mike and I can attest to that. It's a little daunting at first, but it's, um, it's really easy to navigate around now.
Yeah. When, when all said and done. Um, and this code is adopted, the public interface. We're going to be working with staff to design that so that we can set things up like. You know, if you're a citizen, click here and it might have. Most often question or questions they have, right? Or if you're a, a, a developer or a civil engineer. And it will allow us to help them. You know, navigate to the proper sections. Um, so we'll be working with staff to kind of figure out, you know, what, what that looks like so that we can get. A code that when you kind of come to that homepage, you'll be able to say, okay, this is what I'm looking for. Boom. And you won't be, you know, spending half your time going through table contents or searching, trying to find something. That's important to you. So that's my portion of the presentation.
That is Brett's portion. So any questions? Otherwise I'm going to set Brett free. Cause it's already after eight his time. So.
Any questions from missionaries, uh, Bruce?
Not a question so much as a comment, but I think it's, uh, remarkably well done in, in terms of. The ease of use and, and. Making it easy for people to. You know, citizens to provide feedback as, as well as all of us. So I just wanted to say well done.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Bruce. Okay. Well, you all have a great evening. Appreciate your time and look forward to seeing your comments. Thank you.
Thank Brett.
Well, down the road. Have a good evening.
Okay, you too.
So, yep. Craig, next we have outreach.
Okay, go for it.
Excellent. So I am going to turn it over to Elizabeth K. Marquetti and Carl. Um, on Togger. Uh, he might be on video later, but, um, he. Did you make?
Oh, oh.
Yay.
Sometimes the button just doesn't work.
Excellent. Okay. All right. So I'm going to turn it over, um, to these two who have been spearheading our outreach efforts. Um, during the process so far and are going to tell you what we've been doing and also what we plan on doing this summer. So take it away.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. Uh, can everybody hear me? Okay?
Yep.
Great. Uh, so good evening and thank you for the opportunity to join you all this evening. My name is Elizabeth K. Marquetti and Carl Onsager and myself are here to provide an overview. Of the public engagement efforts that have been designed. And implemented by the planning and communication staffs. Since this past winter in support of the ULUC effort. I'll be kicking off the presentation and Carl will be finishing up and leading any kind of Q and A session. So without further ado, I'm going to share my screen. Um, let me know when everyone can. See that if that's coming through, you should see unified land use code engagement update. Planning Commission, today's date. Let's see, how about now? How's that?
You're there.
All right. Yes. Okay. See if I can. Advance it. There we go. Okay. So, uh, to frame this short conversation, we want to point out. How public engagement and outreach is considered a standard best practice in the planning profession. Whether it's a neighborhood planning effort, the creation of new regulations like the ULUC. Or the development of a new policy document like the comprehensive plan. Public outreach and engagement is understood to be a cornerstone of the planning practice. Happily, this practice of engaging and informing the public is supported and encouraged in the city's comprehensive plan. So we'll be going over what's been done so far regarding public outreach and engagement. Since late winter and we'll cover key results to date. We'll also explain what's been planned for the outreach, survey and engagement. Once the draft code becomes available on June 7th. Lastly, we're really excited for your thoughts regarding the survey that's in very draft form. Which will be released during the week of June 7th. So. Beginning March of 2021. The first of four videos was uploaded along with the three topical surveys to the open Littleton website. The first video, uh, called ULUC introduction. Introduces the public to the ULUC. The other three videos were released during the months of April and May. And are about housing, transportation and mobility and the local economy. The goal was to use the videos to drive people to take the surveys. While helping people understand how local zoning can influence housing, transportation and mobility and business choices. As of 10:15 AM today. There have been 198 responses to the three surveys. When added to the responses gathered from the surveys developed to coincide with the Envision Studios. The city has received more than 600 survey responses. So let's jump into some of the results so far. I am not going to be reading to you this evening. Instead I'll draw your attention to some key findings. What's shown on the slide is only, or rather. Let me back up. What we're discussing tonight in terms of survey responses. Uh, is only, uh, the analysis of yes, no type questions. Uh, staff has yet to analysis the questions that invited open ended answers. That is not included in the, the summary of findings tonight. You will see that when the final report on this outreach effort gets wrapped up. So, uh, an interesting data point on this slide. Is that while 92% of respondents usually drive to get around town. Only 65% actually prefer to drive. Also, an interesting thing to note, what, while 38% of respondents usually bike to get around town. Only 35% say they prefer to bike. Which indicates that those folks may not have access to a private vehicle. Here's more, uh, feedback from the mobility summary. Um, this slide. An interesting thing to note is that 71% of respondents thought. That if more destinations were truly bike friendly and that included facilities like showers and. Uh, bike repair stations. Uh, they believe that more people would. Be more likely to use the bicycle on a regular basis. Another thing that we planners find really interesting is the part about how 85% of respondents said. That if there were local shops and stores within neighborhoods within walking distance of where they lived. They would let, be likely to shop there. Which has interesting land use implications potentially in the code. So. At this point, I'm going to hand you off to Carl, who's going to take you through the rest of the survey results. Um, and thank you very much for your time and attention and I'll stick around. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at the end. So I'm going to stop sharing my screen at this point.
Excellent. Thank you, Elizabeth. And once you stop sharing, I can go ahead and start sharing my screen.
No one likes the quitter. Don't do it.
Yeah, let's just go to the next slide if you can. Um, so the key, oh, yep, there we go. Uh, so one of the key takeaways, and this ties into, um, those findings about, uh, being able to walk to destinations. Um, is that 71% of respondents said that Littleton would benefit from more, uh, neighborhood retail. So sit down restaurants, special, specialty shops, um, as well. And then also, you know, the second is more live work or small scale, light industrial commercial space. Um, addressing a potential need there. Uh, from respondents who, uh. Thought that, um, it's easier to find existing commercial space, um, in the city. Um, a fair bit of no opinion responses, uh, which is fine. Um, and yet. When you look at, uh, you know, I believe it's easy to build or expand existing commercial space. Um, only 12% agree. With 35% disagreeing. So some interesting takeaways as far as our, um, development process, especially when we look at our entitlement processes going forward. And then when looking at housing, um. Which housing options would best support the needs of Littleton families? Um, townhomes and attached style units garnered 52% of respondents thinking that was appropriate. Um, followed closely by mixed use, um, developments, uh, smaller tiny homes. Um, and then going on to, um. Detached, uh, ADUs, you know, it just looks like my, my labels got a little, um. Cut off there. The other thing that we did with the housing survey, we did ask if people consider themselves, um, housing burdened. Um, or if they spend more than 30% of their monthly income on rent or mortgage and 33% of respondents said yes. With, um, 8% of respondents saying that they spend, uh, 50% or more of their monthly income on rent or housing costs. So, um, just another rounding point of information that we're getting. And then again, looking at different options such as, um, smaller lot size or smaller, um, scale housing. Um, or, you know. Increasing housing options, um, by, uh, making Littleton more affordable, um, to. Our central workers, teachers and firefighters. Um, so some broad support there. And then we have other options. So people could fill in their own and we will, um, include in analysis of those. You know, kind of fill in your own choice, uh. You know, text fields, uh, with that final report. So those are the, uh, responses that we've gotten so far from what we're calling the pre-draft, um, surveys. And then as we look forward, you know, we can consider the pre-draft kind of the, the appetizer. Uh, whereas it's the summer survey, the public draft, um, engagement plan is really our, uh, main course. Um, and so as Elizabeth mentioned, we have, um. So far gotten some really great responses through our primary strategy. Of using open Littleton and the surveys there and, uh, directing people to envision Littleton. Dot org as well, the link to those surveys and then also the videos. And so our partnership with communications and leveraging our social media outlets. And networks has really, um, done well. And, um, we're going to continue to leverage those, uh, for the summer, uh, public draft engagement. But going a step further and really getting into also, um. Addressing some of that digital divide that we see. And so making paper surveys, um, at select locations available. You know, making sure that we have return locations and that people know where those are. Um, looking, we're, uh, have some posters and yard sign, uh, style signs. Uh, that will include, um, QR codes to take you to those, um, publics, you know, the digital surveys. Uh, but then again, um, at select locations, um, looking to have some of those, um. Those paper surveys. So posting those up, um, and going to where people are in the, uh, public parks, playgrounds and things like that. You know. It's playing on the playground for 30 minutes. Great. Here's a, uh, link to the survey. And then also really driving people also with those QR codes, not just the survey, but to the code itself. So people can, uh, you know, access it, read it. And comment directly on there. Um, we're going to leverage email notifications. Um, and then also we've have a very robust partnership with, um, what we're calling the census partners. And those are. Organizations that really helped us get out the word and encourage people, um, in their networks and in their support systems to, uh. Take their census. Um, and so they are also being asked to, um, do something similar for the unified land use code. So. Um, also we're trying some new things, um. With targeted flyers and surveys to doctors offices, um, and laundromats, get it up on the notice boards and things like that. Go to people. Uh, where they are rather than, you know, hoping that they're there. And, um, also just the good old eat, meet and greets. Um, so you'll see the planners out at those events as well. And at this time, I think one of the things that the, uh, the planning team is really looking for. Um, from planning commission is just a, uh, a checkpoint of. You know, we, we've had surveys, um, when we've had drafts of the code with the comprehensive plan. Um, and just wanted to check in to say, you know, what style of questions and what output of those. Um, is most valuable to planning commission, uh, when you are making, um, your recommendations and your determinations. Um, as you go forward in that public hearing process through the, you know, adopting this legislation and these regulations. Um, and so some of our standard questions are, you know, did you read the, you know, proposed language? And this because it's such a large, um, many chapters, uh. We'll be asking what sections or what chapters did you? Um, you know. Address, you know, specific sections of code that maybe people, um, have more interest in. Um, so housing and, you know, the things that really, um, impact, uh, people and asking, you know, is it positive? Is it neutral? Is your opinion negative? You know, we often ask a question of tying it to the comprehensive plan. Um, does just the bulk of the regulations move us in the right direction as far as the comprehensive plan? The wrong direction? Um, or is it, you know, kind of par for the course, uh, if you will? We also, you know, have utilized, uh, what I generally call the three little bears questions or Goldilocks questions. Um, you know, is it too hot, too cold or just right? Um, so, you know, more, less, the same. Um, for instance, the draft wasn't result in more housing, less housing, the same amount of housing. And same thing with things like commercial space, um, or office opportunities or, you know. Places for people to open a business or mobility choices. Um, so those are the style of questions and you know, there's obviously a lot of wordsmithing that goes into each of those, but, um. Like I said, the planning team I think is looking for just some feedback of, are these, you know. When we report out the answers to these questions, is that valuable to planning commission? And how can we? Um, you know, are there questions we aren't asking? Um, or is there a different way that would be more useful ultimately for the, uh, those decisions? And that is, uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here in front of all of you tonight. Um, and I can either keep these, the slide up or we could go back to, uh, uh, the full view.
I think it's fine to keep this up. Um. Just have a question. I, I do see Dave's hand up and I'll go to you next. Um. I, um, I might've missed it. How long is the survey open? Um, it's a pre-release of the draft, right? Draft code. Is it intended to stay open?
So those, the pre-draft surveys will, uh, close, I believe, will probably take them down on, uh, June 6th. Um, so that way whenever, um. You know, the public draft goes live along with the public draft survey, um, that way there's no cross. I don't want to say cross contamination or anything like that, but just that, that way the public. I don't want to say cross-contamination or anything like that, but just that that way the public draft gets all of the oxygen in the room.
So then the the questions that you're referring to on the slide that's up right now would be released when people are actually reviewing the draft?
Correct. That is the intention.
Okay, great. Dave?
Yeah, um, thanks, Craig. Uh, I had a question. It might be too geeky, but um. So when you're showing us the polling results, you know, early in this slide presentation, mostly by you, Elizabeth. Is there, did anybody calculate how many responses is statistically significant so that it's worth taking that feedback and and safely saying that this is the viewpoint statistically of the of the citizens, right? Versus uh these just happen to be six hundred interested people, but to really say that it's kind of the thinking process of the of the people who live here, we would need seventeen hundred and fifty-three or something like that. Does that make any sense, my 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 question?
It does. And Elizabeth, I can address this. So yeah, I'll say that we have, uh, so Colton Harthrath on our economic development team has looked at this. And, um, you know, while not running through the entire margin of error per question. He has determined in his analysis that the results are statistically significant. And of course, the more we responses we get, the more, you know, that gets calibrated. I think for the these questions, because they are more based on concepts and, you know, it's also you're looking more at trends and just, you know, tying that to how these things appear in the code. Um, and that's what some of our report out of these results will kind of bridge that. To say this is what we heard, and this is where it appears in the actual draft. But like I said, the real meat of all of this is going to be the results that we get out of when people are actually reading that draft. And then responding directly to those regulations. And we'll definitely follow up as much as we can with the statistically significant, really giving the the confidence that the results we're getting are meaningful for those decisions.
Yeah, I figured these would be a little different than the first ones you showed us with, you know, what percentages people like to drive? Which ones would rather drive? I I was guessing that stuff helps form uh the the opinions and some of the changes in direction of the actual code itself. And that was the part I was worried about statistically significant. But yeah, on this one, right, this is feedback of people reading it, and I understand. I understand that. But thank thanks for entertaining the geek question there. I appreciate it.
We welcome it.
Yeah, that is actually very similar to a question I was going to ask about how um how we sort of judge how 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 many responses we're getting and how sort of representative they are of the the broadest, you know, uh, represent representation of the city. Because it seems like we always hear folks that say, hey, I haven't heard about this. And I commend you guys for doing what seems to be a robust outreach process here. But it always seems like it's never enough, right?
And I think that's something that we're also looking for in that summer survey. We played around with different techniques to start, um, you know, not asking for identifiable information. But, um, you know, different techniques to identify where some of those feedback points are coming from. And also so we can calibrate what is our return on effort on some of these. You know, the idea of putting these out into the parks, for instance, I don't know if we can have, you know, unique ways to say, well, if you went through that portal to the survey, then we kind of know where that comes from. But we're we're looking into different ways that we can kind of gauge who responded from where broadly, not, you know, pinpointed to this specific place. But it's something that we are keeping in mind. To try and also gauge, um, you know, the the survey responses. You know, I know NextGen has had a preview of some of this, the NextGen Advisory Committee, and they're hungry for the demographic data. And we don't really have it. It's some of the limitations of, you know, the how the surveys are set up.
Thank you. Beza?
Go ahead there. Question regarding uh validation of the survey. Is the survey only limited to residents of Littleton, the property owners? Who is can respond to the survey? And how do you weigh if other people are open uh to um basically pull out the survey? How do you know they are not developer or constitutional entities that have different agendas than the property owner?
Um, you know, Elizabeth, I'll
I mean, we we don't. You know, we we are taking the approach that we want to cast as wide a net as possible. And the fact is that what happens with Littleton City Code impacts not just landowners, but people who work here. People who come to visit, people who shop, people who um teach here, um, who rent here. And so uh we we are, we are not trying to limit. We're not giving special access to certain people. So we 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 are not tracking. We're not, we're not data locating where where the respondents are are coming from. We're asking broad statements. Like if you see at the bottom of the that one, pick the statement that tells us about you. You can kind of zoom into it. It, we're we're getting, there you go. It's hard to read right there. But we are, we are, we are querying respondents to tell us if they would be so kind as to do they live in the city? Do they work in the city? They own property or business? To kind of give us a general sense of who the respondents are. And the the hard truth uh is is that that's as as, you know, specific as we could get with a serve with surveys of this type in in the the goal. Our goal at the onset was to offer really brief opportunities. We wanted, we didn't want to tire people out. We wanted to put brief surveys in front of them that they would be likely to get through and likely to finish and likely to take another one again on another topic. So we kept these pretty brief for all those reasons.
So if I'm a developer and I want to be basically impact the result of survey. I can sit online and basically fake users and basically sway the whole survey. Or if I'm a special group and I have different agenda, there's no reason that I cannot fill two thousand, five thousand, ten thousand survey. So I think your survey has to be validated. It has to be weighted. So because this survey, if you are going to um apply the result of the survey somehow to something. Then you don't want to be biased by a special group or developer or as a homeowner, me, I might fail out five thousand because I like something or I don't like something. So you're so, in my opinion, there's a policy with this survey. And you, I think it need to be separated to people that property owners, people that work here, and those need to be verified. Survey, you can fill out a survey. The result is meaningless if you don't do that.
And and I will also say that's a question that we have asked as a standard one, and it wasn't on kind of that that list that I had earlier. But in our past code adoption surveys was, you know, are you a resident? Are you a, you know, property owner? Are you, you know, are you a developer? You know, so identifying some of that stakeholder group. You know, it's not something that we have seen, or at least with the responses that we received, especially, you know, looking back at the envisioned Littleton process. You know, there were none of those red flags that gave us pause, frankly. And we do keep an eye out to make sure nobody is spamming our surveys. But, you know, that's, um, we do ask and we'll make sure that that's also, you know, what stakeholder perspective are people bringing with some of those questions as well. And then from the results so far, ninety-four percent of the people who took the Economic Development Survey or the, you know, local economy survey were residents in Littleton. And then, you know, falling within various categories.
So how did you verify that they are residents in Littleton?
I took them at their word.
Okay.
Just to kind of add to that, a lot of the things that we're going to be doing over this summer. We actually finally get to do some in-person things, and we're we're targeting events that are more local and our residents attend, such as the meet, greet, needs. And we'll also have one-on-ones with developers in the community to get their feedback as well.
You're on mute.
Did you call on me?
Yep.
Okay, I didn't quite hear. Yeah, I guess I'm not quite so cynical. I think you can also render a survey meaningless by limiting it to, you know, ten people. I think that, you know, to some way, to some extent, you you might take some answers with a grain of salt. If you got five thousand people telling you they don't want zoning in Littleton, of course, that's a red flag I'm imagining. But, you know, I just, I I think that you kind of got to take people at their word and and, you know, it would be very difficult to try and verify, I think, uh, every person who answers a survey. And we've done this for years, the same kind of thing. It's it's, we're just trying to get a, you correct me if I'm wrong, but we're just trying to get a feeling of what people think in the community. And uh, and you kind of have to trust that they're, you know, they don't have. And and also, you've you've got many people who live, you know, a guy who might be a developer, but also lives in the city. So they've got conflicting agendas and and, you know, they may be answering as a different, a different type of person at at any given time. So, you know, I just, I think that we just have to trust in that uh that people are answering truthfully and and, you know, maybe look for red flags, but not not just throw it out because we can't verify every single person.
And I I think that's a very apt point. And I think it's also just worth noting that this is, the survey is just one component of the equation. Uh, and the real, when we see the direct comments on those regulations. That in some ways also a very valuable, um, and in some instances, more valuable. Whereas the survey is a general barometer is how we've treated them. And so making sure that that barometer is calibrated to what Planning Commission and City Council ultimately need.
Just for clarification, are they, uh, survey takers limited to one per email address? So there's a, you avoid stuffing the ballot boxes, Beza suggested.
I I am, that is my understanding. I will confirm with communications. This is, I think, our first foray using the Open Littleton platform in this sort of capacity. So is my understanding, but I will go ahead. I'll make sure that that's confirmed.
To your question, Carl, about the style of the questions here that are up on the screen. I, my opinion, there that I I think those, that would be valuable feedback from survey takers, you know, during the review. I I I do think even though it would be uh pretty, I think, labor-intensive on staff's end to interpret. And and perhaps you're already thinking this, that there should be, you know, a a comment box where you can write in, you know, specific concerns beyond, you know, just, you know, multiple choice types of questions here. Were you envisioning that?
That is a tool that we've utilized in the past. I think, given the breadth and depth of the code. We're really trying to encourage people to comment, especially since we have this tool. Where we're not having people download a Word document, redline the Word document, send it back to it, that we can get them to comment directly through in-code. Is, you know, we're really looking to get people to do that. Now, at the same time, if we have them engaged in a survey, they're probably going to have some specific feedback points in there. But we're really, I think, hoping to get most of that through in-code.
Any other thoughts on the question style that Carl has up there? Is it going to be useful to us as we go through?
Carl, did you, I I may have missed it, but did you or Elizabeth mention that these surveys did have some open-ended questions? And we just haven't tabulated and and categorized those yet? Carl, do you want to go ahead and take down the PowerPoint?
Absolutely. I'll share.
So that is all we had for this evening. Just kind of give you guys an introduction, but we're happy to take any questions or ideas that you have.
I I think the survey might be good, but um a lot of the people that I talk to, and I walk around a lot, so I come across a lot of people and neighbors and so forth. They they do not read webpages. Some of them, they don't even go to the, they don't know Littleton as a webpage. And when they hear something, they get very upset. And they lose the trust to their staff and the city leaders. And there'd be a lot of bitterness uh in my area right now. I think um proper approach might be to have sample door-to-door and talk to people, talk to community in weekends or, you know, most of the people, they don't go to meetings. They don't want to go sit in the hall right now and listen four hours to different lectures and so forth. So I I think it's incumbent to everybody to notify people and really find feelings. Because, as I said, there are a lot of people that I talk to that have very, very bad taste in their mouth. From a lot of things that basically when you talk to them. So I encourage the staff or whoever, commissioners, consultants, to go talk to your constituents. And see what their feeling is about this, because this is a major change. I don't think the opportunity to go in to be there for another twenty, twenty-five years to change this stuff. Major step. So that that's my comment.
And we are, when drafting those posters, we are starting from a point of informing the public that this change is coming. Letting them know, you know, this is what the city is doing. This is, and so, you know, we are doing that, not just say, hey, here's a survey, go take it. It's explaining in very plain language, you know, that we are replacing our zoning code. Um, and here's how it might impact people. So we are trying to do that. And then, you know, leveraging it's, I I absolutely agree. I'm as liaison to Next Generation Advisory Committee, encouraging them to tap into their networks and really get the word out.
Yeah, my my uh concern was the mode, the mood of uh communication. Uh, a lot of us use web because through work, we have to do it. A lot of the residents in my area. They do not go search the web for stuff. They don't listen to podcasts. They don't listen to uh Channel Eight. So they hear second, third hand, and there is a lot of misinformation. So if you right now go to ten of my neighbors and talk about building height in downtown Denver, you're going to get completely different answer. Uh, I mean, somebody was telling me that we are going to change everything to sixty-five feet high. So those are the things that is not communicated very well. And you you can basically be online and broadcast. If those people don't listen to you, you're wasting your time. Uh, look, look at the number of people that attend meetings. Last time I counted. Last time I counted, there was only thirty-five people attended the meeting. So for some reason, the message is not getting there.
The one thing I would suggest, since we are creating the paper surveys, I would love to give you all some paper surveys that you could give out to different people. And it will absolutely have the, you know, the address where they can drop this off, or they're happy to scan it in if they're that savvy. But that would be a huge help to us. If you guys are, are willing to talk to some people and pass out some paper surveys.
Well, then happy to do it.
Yeah, let us know how we can help them.
Yeah, I mean, people that are tech savvy, please drive them to, to take the survey online. And even right now, you know, for the next two weeks, we, we have the other videos up. So even having, you know, driving people to the video so they know what's going on.
I think if there's a document that summarizes the major changes, the major, that can be part of that survey, that will help because nobody can read the entire code from top and bottom and take exception to every voting and so forth. So I think a pamphlet type, and I have seen this in different cities, like Cambridge, Massachusetts, did the same thing. Their code was hundred-year-old. And they came with the new one, they did a pamphlet, and they talk about building height. You know, number of parkings, stuff that people really care about. They don't care about minute stuff. But what is the major change? That might be only twenty or thirty. That as part of that survey, they can look at that and say, okay, we agree or we disagree or you explain why or what's the objective? Or what was a good, bad, ugly about this? Or what negative impact going to have? Or what positive impact going to have? So those open the discussion that then they understand and basically they can fill out this survey more educated rather than just from God's view. But they are not going to read the code. So ask them, is, is the code good or bad or ugly? They don't know.
Yeah. I, I agree. I think it's going to be a select few folks that actually read this and review this and provide their comments. So how do we get that out to the rest of the folks that are going to be impacted by it? And I, I think that's a great idea to somehow have some sort of a a bulleted summary of the changes that people can expect with this code that, you know, might get their antennas up a bit and, and, and kind of push them to get on, get involved. Yeah. I want to go to Dave next because he set his hand up and then Bruce, I see.
Thanks. I've been through something like this two, two different times. One with when I was a board member and president of our HOA, and another time when I was president of a worldwide trade organization, get the word out type of campaign. And in both, like Beza's suggestion and, and I think Jennifer said it, you know, us as a commission, if we participate in going out and talking to neighbors or handing out the, the pages, what I found was you're going to get asked a lot of questions. And what happened was disinformation started to spread. And I wanted to ask Reed if he had any red flags there. As far as us, I mean, you know, I'll be trying my best to say, you know, I know nothing. I'm just asking you to go here and take the survey, but I just wonder if we've got any issues there where, you know, accidentally Robin interprets something that somebody asks that's different or, or anything like that? Or am I just being paranoid?
No, I think it's, it's totally fine. In fact, encouraged for commissioners to direct constituents to go fill out surveys, to weigh in on stuff. As we go through kind of the whole code process, it's, it's legislative in nature. So you should be, as commissioners, reaching out to, to neighbors and constituents to kind of form your opinions going forward. So that's completely appropriate and encouraged.
Okay, so like voicing an opinion on something, if somebody asks you or anything, we don't need to worry about that.
Don't need to worry about that.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Voice away.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I would venture to say that that's, you know, you're interpreting, you're, you're interpreting what you're reading and the way that you would understand it and encourage them to make their own mind, you know, based on, you know, getting into it and reading it and, and their interpretation. So.
And encouraging them to, to talk with us too. I mean, don't feel like you'd answer all the questions. And I mean, we're even still looking things up too. So don't, don't feel like you need to know everything. But, you know, when you do hear comments or, you know, people are expressing concerns like Beza, you said that there's some distrust going on. I, I would love to talk to you more about that. Not in this setting, but in a, in a private setting. You know, what, what is that? And is that something that we can change?
Bruce?
Just going to suggest as well that, I mean, it, it, it doesn't surprise me that there is a theme out in the community of distrust. I mean, this is something that goes back a long time and pretty much every community that, you know, we're, people have sort of been over the past, you know, thirty-some-odd years been brought up to distrust what the government is saying. And the truth of the matter is, is we've, we've done, I think, an extraordinary job of trying to be as open and as transparent as is humanly possible for a, a project of this magnitude and complexity. It will always, and historically it always has been, much easier to convey a no sentiment on something like this. Oh, we, you know, they're just doing this because whatever. And, you know, you're getting hosed and so forth and so on. As opposed to trying to explain why it's necessary and positive and the outcome of a, of a, of a good process. So the, the likelihood of us being able to effectively counter a, a, a theme that's out there in the community that, that, that's negative just on the face of it is, is questionable. I, I think, you know, yeah, getting paper surveys out there or passing information out sure is fine, but you're never going to engage everybody. I mean, I think, you know, Mike, you know, and Carl and Kay. You know, if you get, if you do a hundred surveys or you offer a hundred surveys to, to the community and you get ten of them back, that's a good response rate statistically. And that, that, that is the nature of the beast. And so Beza, I understand what you're saying. I mean, but I, you know, the, the, the idea that, you know, somebody maybe is, is out there conveying a no sentiment. It's, it's very easy to convince people that they're being, you know, that they're being done hard, hard done by. It, it's a lot harder to do what we're doing, which is trying to update something that's outdated and is a complex undertaking and just getting people's bandwidth to, to pay attention to that for enough time. As you said, nobody other than us is going to read the whole thing cover to cover anyway. And so I think we do the best we can to try to engage people and let them know we're doing it as citizen volunteers and you know, we're not getting paid to do this. We volunteer to do it because it's something that needs to be done for the betterment of the community. That, that should, that should be an important attribute in talking to somebody of, you know, what's your motivation here?
Yeah, I, 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 I think my point was, and Bruce, I understand what you're saying. But my point is there are some major points that are being basically misinterpreted by most of the people. And I think before the survey is basically began, or as part of the survey, is good to bring those basically primary points of change. So most of the people understand it because, for example, when they change, put the lights in the Heritage High School, they were posted and so forth, but that neighborhood, most of the people, they didn't know about the lights. So it basically developed a mistrust. And it was very simple for whoever done that to knock on the door and just show them the lights as kind of like a cut sheet. I caught a blue line. These are the locations, the heights that the light's going to be, you know, thirty-five feet. This is how bright they're going to be, only going to be on during this hour. That diffuse that situation. So I understand most of the people, they don't care until and become negative on everything against government. That, that's given. But my point is, I think Littleton has an obligation to inform on major issues and basically is not to develop a six-hundred-page code and say, now President Joe, go read this and come up with survey. I think we have obligation to inform major changes. In, in past, that was published in newspaper. There was town hall meeting. Those, those things are not around anymore. So the communication go more the word of mouth from somebody that reads that, misinterprets, and then wired up the whole neighborhood about certain issues. So in order to avoid that, in order to basically give credibility to this whole procedure, I think those big items that are always are critical and they are basically point of discussion or point of confrontation. Those need to be really published in a pamphlet or a flyer. I said, these are the things that going to be changed. Let's engage people. Let's basically get the buy-in upfront, not to go and approve them and then have all these negative people running around and say, oh, they didn't listen to us or they didn't inform us. That was my point.
Okay, Jason, you had your hand up? And here you are.
I can defer to Reed.
Oh, no, I was just going to babble. Please, please go on.
Okay. So, yeah, I appreciate the discussion and I, I think, you know, one thing that, that might help folks in, you know, kind of preparing to read this phone book-sized document, if it were printed, would be to highlight areas that it might be of interest, you know. So and if you're interested in what Littleton Boulevard might look like, yeah, these are the chapters to look at first. If you're interested in what Beza's neighborhood might look like, these are the chapters to read first. Just give people sort of a trail of breadcrumbs to find their way to the things that interest them in the code. As opposed to just, you know, handing off this website, which is going to have, you know, many, many, many pages worth of scrolling and clicking through. On the, the outreach, really appreciate the efforts that the city's doing to, you know, try to get out to where people are gathering. I like the idea of, you know, visiting the laundromats, the doctor's offices and getting materials there. One thing in terms of building awareness that might help is to include a QR, QR code to easily sign up for the Littleton Report online. I get the weekly email from the city. It's got a lot of, you know, information about what's going on. You know, for example, I learned why the trees were coming down next to the National Register building next to City Hall. They were impacting the foundation. And fortunately, they were also very old trees and some people missed them and raked about it on Nextdoor. But because I'm a subscriber to that, I was able to explain, hey, here's why the trees are coming out. Although the response was, well, that's what they want you to believe. So it didn't overcome all skepticism. But just to make it easy and seamless to, you know, get access to that information and that continuing information about the city. I mean, even if I never visited the city's website, I get like five bullet points every single week about stuff relevant to me as a resident. So you know, that could be a very easy QR code to slap next to the take the survey QR code to, you know, perhaps increase future engagement, even if it's not going to pay off in the first couple of weeks. Yeah. So I think that, yeah, just, you know, those are my two thoughts are, you know, let's, you know, do what we can to drive more engagement, you know, and kind of the, the snowball surveys of the planning commissioners handing things out to their neighbors. That's a neat idea. And yeah, if we can somehow offer, you know, and an easy set of guideposts for people's interests when they're reviewing the code, that that I think would help with engagement. Cause it, yeah, I've, I've read many zoning codes. They are daunting documents. And, and it's my job to read them. As well as my pleasure.
Thanks, Jason. Reed?
You know, I would, you know, kind of chime in and echo kind of the sentiments that I've heard from, from Commissioner Rosay and, and Commissioner Reynolds is, you know, getting kind of the community to buy in, to participate is, is really challenging from the city's perspective. I mean, we can only get so many people to, to respond. If you'll recall, you know, we went through the downtown rezoning. We sent out notices over six hundred, eight hundred notices to individual property owners. We got four property owners that actually call in and, and talk about kind of their concerns. So, you know, you can only lead the horse to water so many times. And so that's kind of one of the things that I think this staff in particular has really tried to kind of broaden that scope of, of engagement. Trying new things. And, you know, as commissioners, you're familiar with a lot of the, the individuals who are really plugged in that will call in on, you know, just about everything coming in. They're very well-educated in terms of that. But, you know, from someone just doing, you know, day-to-day business, it's, it's pretty challenging to reach all those individuals, to get them to, to engage on certain things. Sometimes it just doesn't matter, you know, they live in a residential area, you know, probably not much is going to change. And so they're not all that interested. So I think our staff in particular has really tried very hard to try to bring in different elements of our community to, to weigh in, but we can only do so much. So that's all I really have.
Well, thank you for that, Reed. Yeah. And, you know, I, I think there's, there's generally a fear of change in the community and, and the status quo is, is easy, right? So you know, I, I think in my experiences, if, if you have the, the, the sort of champions of an effort in place and they're, they're well-informed that, you know, ultimately, when it comes down to the public hearings that are required for adoption of this code, that those folks are ready to step up and, and defend it. They've been engaged. And I think the envision process has been very robust. I mean, it's very proactive. It started early, started with the vision and you know, what you'd want to see in a planning process. So yeah, we're not going to get to everybody. And I'm, I'm sure that folks are going to be concerned at the last minute when they find out that there are changes that might impact them. So, you know, I think we just need to be prepared to, you know, understand how folks can, can and might be impacted, you know, what means and measures are going to be in place for, to mitigate those issues. I, you know, I think we need to be able to say that the revised code is not going to hurt them, you know, it, it's intended to, to make things better because we want to improve the city. Yeah, I think you know, I, I, I think as we go through this, being informed enough to be able to, you know, defend what's in the code is going to be critical. Jennifer?
Yeah, I, I mean, so I think another thing to, to emphasize here is that it, it's your It it's your code, it's it's everyone in Littleton's code, it's not. It's not the planner's code, it's it's everybody else's code, so we do want to hear from people. And we also fully anticipate there to be several changes. Between what we put out there on June seventh and then what starts to go through the adoption process in late August. That is, that is the nature of of this document, so. I we, I I am not going into this thinking it's all perfect and nobody's gonna have any comments, that's that's not what we are. What we're after at all, we we want to hear from you all. And I do, speaking of hearing from you all, I wanna bounce this over to Mike if I could real quick. And he's gonna kind of summarize what we've laid out for the summer study sessions. And how we'll kind of get through major parts of the code. We clearly are not getting through all of it, word by word. But, you know, we'll be definitely be looking to you all. If you wanna set up times to to meet with either me or Mike or Carl or Elizabeth. And talk through more specific comments, we'd be happy to do. So, but Mike, you wanna go over that?
Thanks, Jen, and I wanted to thank Carl and Elizabeth for a great presentation and like an outstanding effort to. To. Conduct the outreach effort to the greatest extent that we can, there's also Andrea Mimma. And Ernie Rose, who couldn't be here this evening, but they participated in this well as a- as well as. Carl and Elizabeth, so I wanted to say thank you and and it's been a great, a lot of great discussion tonight. As you heard from from Brett Keast, we've got. We've got four major character areas within the code. And we happen to have four study sessions between now and when the the. Public comment closes on on July thirtieth. So we thought it was kind of natural to sort of separate those character areas into different study sessions. So what we've laid out so far, on June fourteenth in two weeks. We've got a joint study session with the Historical Preservation Board. Which should be a a great opportunity to talk about the the downtown character area. And also the Historic Preservation Code. In these study sessions, we have sort of limited time, so we've gotta hit the highlights, but we will actually have. The code to to review, so. But I think that's about a manageable chunk to talk about. With the Historical Preservation Board and an appropriate two topics to to discuss with them. On June twenty eighth, which should be the next study session, we have a joint study session again with the Housing Task Force. So for that, we've planned to talk about corridors and mixed use. And also the general standards that would apply to the entire city. From there, we go to July twelfth. And we are planning to talk about neighborhoods. And also the subdivision code. And then we'll wrap it up on July twenty sixth by talking about the business and industrial. Character area or business and industry, I should say. And also the nonconforming uses, structures and lots section. As well as the environmental management section. So we've got kind of a full slate and that doesn't, that really doesn't cover every single title. Of the of the draft code that you'll see. For example, there's a definitions section and an administrative section. That you'll wanna read, but we may not have time to discuss that in a in a study session. Because I think we'll really have our hands full. Then. Let's see, we also have on June fourteenth, we'll have a public hearing as well in addition to the. To the joint study session with HPV and the and the downtown discussion. I can see Reed's hand is up, so I may have.
Go ahead, Reed.
Oh, Lord. Now, I and I just wanted to kind of echo. Some of the things that kind of we're hearing, so Michael's kind of gone through all the different things that we're gonna see in the code. Coming forward. And while we're gonna do our best to make this as complete a document as possible. You know. We're still gonna be doing tweaks, you know, after, you know, coming up through the years as we figure out. Know what worked, what didn't work, so this isn't gonna be the last time that. Our our commission sees this code and various aspects of it, but. You know, we're really efforting to having as complete a document as we can throughout this process, but. Yeah, I don't think that this thing is gonna be locked in stone and it's never gonna change again for another. Forty years, Lord help us, we'll certainly be making tweaks along the way as we. Kind of bear it out, you know, best practices and and things along those lines as to what works and what doesn't, so. You're not done with us.
Well, that that said, I'm I'm a bit stressed about the, you know, fitting in. The the type of robust discussion that this commission has in four. Sessions, which are gonna go, it's just gonna fly right by, and especially with a public hearing in the middle, which is gonna be a big chunk of one of the meeting. So. You know, I know one is gonna be, there's gonna be prepared for some fairly long meetings, I think, you know, depending on how much discussion we wanna have and there is. And and the other option, I'll just kind of throw it out there, is there, we have done this in the past, is add study sessions. So think about that, I don't think we need to decide that tonight, but that there is that opportunity if we wanna get into it more. I would ask Mike and and Jennifer, should, how 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 we best come prepared? To those sessions, should we focus on our comments? You know, leading up to those meetings on those particular sections that we're gonna discuss at those meetings, then, is that your thought?
That that would be our. And what we'll do is basically provide a staff communication. That lists out the sections that we'll be focusing on and and trying to cover, not just the chapter, but digging down. Cuz there's some sections that you're like, okay, we probably don't need to discuss that or they're short enough, we don't, we don't really need to discuss it, so. We'll outline that in staff communications and then we'll provide the links to where you need to go. In in code to to find those. So we do also have the capability to like create a PDF. Of that as well, if that would be helpful to anyone, we can include that in the staff communication too.
I think that'd be very helpful.
At the PDF?
Well, and the length.
Okay, yeah. Definitely do that, I I apologize, like due to the length of it, I. I don't think I can offer to print it out for anybody, so. Considering taxpayer dollars, sorry.
Yeah, just just going forward, you know, as we envision kind of the ULUC coming out, I mean. We're talking four to five hundred pages, so it's. There's room for improvement as we go through this, so.
Yeah, as old schools, I am, I, you know, I love to print things and get out my red pen and so on, but I encourage everybody to get used to. Commenting online here, it's it sounds like this end code is a pretty robust, the user friendly. System that will allow us to comment, I think that each individual's comments are not visible to the other commenters, if I'm not mistaken. So.
Correct.
But they will be visible to staff, so there may be a whole conversation, I'm sure there'd be some varying viewpoints on some of the comments.
I have a comment also.
Okay, Robin.
I would like to, you know, Mike, you just went over what you were, what was gonna happen, could you send that out to us so then we can be prepared? Well in advance to know what section and then what, of course, you talked about Jennifer too. If we just get it the, you know, the Thursday before, it's not enough time. So. If you can give us a few weeks so that we can make sure that we can be well educated to have those conversations.
We absolutely can do that, I mean, even when we drop it on June seventh. Fifteen days from now, but. So e- even when we drop it, we can give you those those links kind of right off of that, even in a group email.
Thank you for that. More notice we have, the better.
Yeah. Agreed.
All right, anything else, Mike, or?
No, that that covers it, I think, it's been a a great series of discussions we've had over the past. I think it's been three study sessions to this point and then. Will really change focus when the when we're all able to see the code. And makes more specific comments, so I'm really looking forward to the next, the next step.
I wanna be respectful of everybody's time, so unless anybody else has any other. Questions or comments for staff, Reed, did you have something? Go ahead. Yeah, just real quick, you know, one of the things that. City Council is gonna be entertaining come tomorrow is the reopening plan for the city. So obviously, there's been a lot of different public health orders that have come out, it's some relaxation of those public health orders. So, starting on June first. City Council is going to be meeting in person. As some have been doing in in, you know, in recent weeks, but we're gonna be opening it up to the public. One of the questions that. And I'm not sure, maybe I shouldn't be saying this, but I'm not sure how it's going to come before the boards and commissions is. Everyone's comfort level with returning back. Into into the office, so to speak, or into council chambers. I know that, you know, most individuals have had an opportunity to get vaccines if they so choose to do so. But one of the things that I know that our council is really. Excited about or focused on is kind of getting back to another level of normalcy, if we will. So I'm gonna kind of throw it out there to to the commission right now in terms of your comfort level with. With returning back to kind of in-person meetings. And I don't need anyone to respond, if you wanna respond to me, you know, personally by email or or telephone, that's totally fine, but. I know that that's a subject that is gonna be coming up in 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 the next few weeks. You know, in terms of opening up City Hall. We have some, you know, we still have remodeling going on, so while council chambers is. Is up and going and fantastic and, you know, we all look forward to having everyone. Come partake in in the vast improvements to our council chambers. We we do have, you know, our engineering division has moved over to Geneva Lodge. As we had our tenants over there kind of vacate premises, so they're still in the process of moving over there. Community development because Mr. Sutherland is so demanding. They're gonna get remodeled and our building department, so we have a lot of kind of moving parts going on within the city. That make it a little bit more challenging to kind of open the doors, so to speak, just with. Staffing and positioning and noise and all those things, but. Yeah, we're we're curious, I know city council's curious as to figuring out what the comfort level is with. With all of our boards and commissions. And coming back and partaking in. In our 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 council chambers, so. I see Commissioner Stallman has.
Yeah, question, I mean. What what would be helpful to understand is what. Level of social distancing is likely to be maintained upon. Restarting in-person meetings.
Yeah, I mean, right now, you know. I- if you observe any council meetings, we have kind of some. Plexiglas, plexiglass type partitions between council members or board members. You know, right now, there are no requirements that. We have masks or anything of that nature going on, so, you know. We've opened up our library and our museum to the public. And so they can come in there without having asked on, I mean, it's recommended, we have kind of some sign in, so. To answer your question, Commissioner Stallman, I. I don't know if I got a good answer for you. And, you know, we've never, unless it was kind of a contentious hearing, we've never had a. A huge amount of. Public participants, if you will, but there's there's plenty of room in there, but. We don't have any requirements right now, but it's valid concern, I can certainly appreciate that. I mean, at 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 the end of the day. You are all, I mean, you're all volunteers. So, you know, however we can do this safely, that's gonna be paramount, and I know that. City manager Mark Ralph is very thoughtful of that. And that's been kind of one of the driving forces behind making sure that we get this right, so. On June first, council's going to meet in person, the public is. Is going to be allowed to come in. But after that, no decisions have been made for any of our boards, so it's something that we're gonna be reaching out to. All of you to figure out what your comfort level is and what can we we do to kind of secure whatever that comfort level is.
Okay, so.
I think a transition period may be appropriate. So people that are comfortable to go in person and go in person, the people that maybe have. Issues, health issues, or maybe they don't want to expose themselves at this point, maybe they can do virtual. And then as months pass, maybe one to two months, we can then decide. Is appropriate and relevant to meeting person or not, so I think that should be a voluntary. And should accommodate the people that they don't wanna come in.
Thanks, Steve. The, my understanding is there's a a technology challenge with doing this sort of hybrid meetings. That council has been doing to date. And that the preference would be that we either do in-person meetings or continue this sort of virtual. Type of meeting. And, you know, as much as I think this has worked really well for us for the last year and a half, I think we've been able to function fairly well. I for one is would welcome the opportunity to get back, see people, you know, for real again, so I'd I'd welcome, you know. Going back at some point, I think especially in terms of the public engagement, I I I think there there are some limits. To the virtual world that I don't know that we're getting the 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 public comment that we would get. You know, if people were actually coming out to the meeting. My observation, Jason, I see you have your hand up too.
I appreciate everyone's thoughts on this and, yeah, if if hybrid could work. It might also afford us an opportunity to see, continue seeing Commissioner Rosay's cat if he chooses to appear remotely. Certainly going to miss seeing the cat.
Yeah.
Past is bedtime.
He'll wake you up at four AM, it's okay. No, I I just, I really appreciate you, you know, bringing that up, but I will say, you know, the the online format. At least on the the county side has proven to be a real boon for public participation. Many of the residents of the county live a forty minute drive away from where we would be holding hearings. So appearing via phone is a wonderful option for those constituents. You know, I'd love to see, you know, some form of that continue in the future as an option for residents who, for whatever reason, maybe. Don't wanna make the trip down to City Hall to participate in the meeting. Thanks.
Reed? Yeah, you know, from my understanding, at least at this point, it, the hybrid kind of meeting is a little challenging from kind of a staffing perspective. So at least at this point, the, the current considerations are, we're either all in or, or not. So, you know, obviously that's, that's up for discussion with, with council in terms of the direction that they provide staff. But I would just say from a staffing perspective, my understanding is it's been a little challenging in terms of kind of manning the kind of electronic format, if you will, as well as kind of the in-person. So, but I don't know. I, I just work here. So guys tell me where I need to be and how I need to be there and I'll get it done.
And like we said, we don't need a decision tonight. It was just, we wanted to bring it to your attention that it is becoming a possibility. So but it's up to all of you as to when that happens.
Olograms. That's what I say.
Okay. Well, let council be the guinea pigs. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Any last thoughts or concerns? If not, oh, go ahead, Bruce.
Again, I just was going to express heartfelt thanks to staff for all the hard work and all of the excellent content that, that you guys have allowed us to, to have access to. And we can't really thank you enough, but it's duly noted and really appreciated.
They are achieving excellence.
Yes, they are.
I know I haven't heard that in a while.
Okay, yeah. Thanks. Thanks all. Appreciate the presentation.
It's a pleasure.
Look forward to the next couple of months of a lot of discussion. Okay. Well, have a good night, everybody. See you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.